Okay, if anyone could please rise and salute the flag, we'll bring this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. McCullough, would you please read the notice of the reorganization meeting?
Yes. Prove to section four dash four oh zero two of the Pennsylvania Public School Code, this is to notify board members that a meeting of the organization of Daniel Boone Area School District will be held Monday, December 3rd, 2012, at 7:30 at the Daniel Boone Middle School Auditorium at 1845 Weaver Tower, Douglasville, PA. That's it.
Okay. Any public comments on the agenda for the reorganization meeting?
Excuse me, do you want to take a roll call?
I'm sorry. You're right, roll call. I was moving down the list. Mr. Semenaro?
Here.
Mrs. Hammel?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz? Mr. McCullough here. Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Potts? Here. Mr. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Okay, having said that, are there any public comments on agenda items on the reorganization meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to number five. Do you want to get Mr. Kurtz on the?
I'll get the Mr. Basil, otherwise we can make reaffirmations and have to do this separately.
Yeah, I'd like to get him on the line.
Okay.
Hello?
Hey, Mr. Kurtz, this is Andrew Basil, how are you?
Hello, Mr. Basil, I am pulling into the middle school right now.
Okay, I think we could probably give you thirty seconds to come on in.
Thank you very much. You'll have no, you have no idea how terrible the traffic was coming down. It was unbelievable.
Okay, we'll see you in a minute. All right. Now, let's just relax for a minute. I can get something to drink before we start. All right, got it. Okay. Do you want to say for the record that he's here in the roll call? Mr. Kurtz? Do you want to have a note for the record? Yes. Okay, for the record, Mr. Kurtz is at the meeting. Are you ready? You sure? You want to take your jacket off?
Oh, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to number five, which is nominations, elections of a temporary president. Anyone can nominate a temporary president. A temporary president must be elected from holdover members of the board. Once the nominations are received, anyone can make a motion to close the nomination for temporary president, which requires a second motion, we'll record the vote, and then the secretary will declare the nomination for board, temporary board president, and then we'll hold the election for it. So, do I hear any nominations for a temporary board president? Nominate Mr. McCullough. Mr. McCullough has been nominated. Do I, because there's no seconds. Any other nominations?
Close the nominations.
Okay. Close the nominations, and let's record the vote. Can you get a second? Can you get a second? Okay. This is for a motion to make Mr. McCullough temporary president.
Does it require a second?
I'm sorry?
It doesn't require a second.
I'm sorry, my paper says so, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.
So now, number six, seating of new elected board members. Um, Mr. Basil, could you do me, since it's in front of you, can we all stand and, right, we do the standing, we all swear the oath, there are new board members, but, actually, Mr. Dr. Autumn could read it too, either one.
Okay, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will obey, that I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties?
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Moving on to number seven, nominations for board president. Uh, from one-year terms, starting December 1st, 2012 through December 1st, 2013, may I add such a notion. Any nominees? Nominate Mr. Basil. Um, Mr. Sheehan? I'd like to nominate Mr. Sheehan. Uh, any other?
Motion to close.
Motion to close? Okay. This is for, the first vote will be for Mr. Sheehan, I'm sorry, Mr. Basil as board president.
I think we should go around and say the names.
Oh, do we? Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's how they sound before.
My apologies. Mrs. Hammel?
Mr. Basil.
Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. Basil.
Mr. McCullough, Mr. Sheehan, Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Basil.
Mr. Potts?
Mr. Sheehan.
Mr. Sheehan?
Mr. Sheehan.
Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Basil.
Mr. Semenaro?
Mr. Basil.
And Mr. Basil.
Uh, Mr. Basil.
Congratulations, Mr. Basil, you are now, uh, your board president for one more year, and you can take over the meeting.
Okay, uh, we have nominations, election for the board vice president for one tier, uh, one-year term, December 1st through December 1st, 2013. Request nominations for a vice president.
Nominate Mr. Sheehan.
Okay, Mr. Sheehan, do I hear any other nominations for vice president? Okay, hearing none, um, close the nominations, and can we get a roll call vote then?
Um, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan, uh, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Sheehan.
Okay, moving on, appointment to legislative action representative, from a one-year term, December 1st, 2012 to December 1st, uh, 2013.
Can I, can I just ask, as we go down through these, if we could, if anybody would have held that position this year, so we have an idea, because some of the things we didn't refer to, and some of the things they referred to, it may be a little different, so, they say, you know, just an example, Mr. Wolf, so I held that position, we have an idea, we would have an idea what that position was?
Sure.
If it was being called. So, if anybody knows who held that, uh, position?
Correct me if I'm wrong, you held this position?
I think I held, I held that position, yes.
That's correct. So, um, do I hear any nominations for legislative action representative, or anyone want to volunteer for that position?
I'll do it again.
You'll do it again? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay? Yep?
Uh, I make a motion to close it.
Okay, motion to close, second.
Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote, please? Um, Mr. McCullough, yeah, uh, this is for Mr. Sheehan?
Legislative action representative.
Uh, Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Sheehan, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz, yes. And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, ten, moving on, appointment of PA school boards representative, one-year term, December 1st, 2012 to 2013. Um, I believe that's you, Mr. Potts, right?
I currently hold that, uh, position, and I'd be willing to stay with that position.
Okay.
I nominate Mr. Potts.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there a motion to close? Second?
Second.
All right, um, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Um, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on, appointment of Burks EIT representative, earned income tax representative, one-year term, December 1st, 2012 to December 1st, 2013. I believe right now it's, uh, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, in addition to the Tax Collection Council, TCC.
Yeah, right, the TCC is also part of that as well.
I'm not interested in continuing to be representative for next year.
Okay, so we need, we need someone to sit on that board, if anyone's interested. I sat in up for a couple of years, I thought it was a valuable experience, you get to meet a lot of other school board members from different districts, uh, when I was on, it was eighteen other school districts, now I believe it's like, what, twenty-seven schools, plus the county and all the municipalities, so you have an opportunity to really meet and work with, um, some, from individuals of all the different governmental bodies.
I would just ask, when are the meetings, are they?
Once a quarter, right?
They're once a quarter, the Tax Collection Council is usually on Thursday, uh, or the Bureau of the CIT is on, uh, on the Tuesday. Is it one for each every quarter? One for each every quarter. And, uh, what they've done recently, though, is they've had the Tax Collection Council meeting start at six, and five, uh, by the CIT meeting itself, um, so they can find out what night it's, there for a while, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for me, I'll be starting, uh, some things I have for next year, I'm looking to, uh, to do.
So, the TCC meeting and the Bureau of the CIT meeting are now on the same night?
Right, until they, until they roll the Tax Collection Council?
Into?
Or dissolve it into?
Right.
One in the same, um, if, same night.
Right, so it's one night, it's usually March, it's like quarterly, so it's usually March, June, September, and then in December, and it's on a Thursday night from, I think it's seven to eight, or something like that, it's not very often.
Eight-thirty is the last.
Yeah. So, any takers? All right.
If nobody's willing to do it, I'd be happy to try and look at the schedule and see if I can do it, and if I can't, I'd come back to the board and let them know, but I'd be willing to give it a try, just to be prepared.
Okay. I nominate Mr. Kurtz then.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz, appreciate that.
Motion to close, second.
Okay, we can roll call vote?
Um, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, looks like we don't have any action on twelve through fifteen, uh, those appointments will happen in January and June. Uh, the next one is sixteen, appointment of the Blazer Foundation Committee Representative.
Who presidencies?
I believe that's Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, Mr. McLaughlin.
Consider continuing with that, or really, really? Well, again, I, it's, they haven't done anything.
If I can, the, the way they function, um, when they first got started up, I think it was more critical, but, again, as the representative, they're always invited to the, to the monthly meeting that they have, but it's, they're, they're starting to get started on their own, so it's really not a, a high-pressure position.
I know.
Anybody else?
Motion to close, second.
Okay. We can roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Congratulations. Yes, moving on, appointment of three board members to the Economic Revitalization Advisory Group, for one-year term, January 1st through December 31st, 2013.
Mr. Sheehan to Amity.
Mr. Sheehan to Amity. Uh, right, currently, it's Mr. McCullough, myself, and Mr. Sheehan.
Again, all intents and purposes, it's very similar to yours, we met once, and then we did the redistricting, and we haven't done?
Anything since.
Anything, it's not, they haven't asked us to do anything else, I mean, they're supposed to.
I actually nominate all three of us back.
Second. They nominate themselves, but I'll not make it.
If that's, if that's okay.
Unless somebody else is interested in, in doing it, then the election?
We haven't done any job, we haven't been on.
Well, it will after, it will, this year is okay yet.
Yeah, okay.
It's, next year we're going to have to reshuffle this.
Yes.
So, again, I nominate all three of us back.
Okay.
Next year it doesn't matter, because this is, this is done based on municipalities, it has nothing to do with voting discharges.
Right.
Correct, that's actually true.
So, if we have a lone board member from Amity or Renning, it would be that person that falls.
Oh, then we have to change the order.
Motion to close?
Okay, uh, do we have a second to close?
Who's the second?
Mr. Potts. Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Okay, do we need to do eighteen here?
No.
I don't think so. Authorization of board members to sign checks and continue to use the present signature, tam. Nothing changed. Okay, committee appointments, um, as a reminder, pursuant to policy zero zero five, board president will remind all board members who desire to participate on a standing committee to make their desires known to him or her five days prior to the December voting meeting. So, we, we stepped this up, so we weren't waiting around until January, um, so if you want to be on a committee, or you want to stay in the committee that you're on, or you want to be the chairman of a committee, um, please let me know which committees you want to be on, and we'll go from there, okay? And I need to have those five days before the voting meeting this month.
And the, uh, meeting dates are subject to change based on?
Based on the committee configuration, absolutely, okay? And, um, I'll send out an email reminder, uh, to the board members, um, as we get closer to that date, uh, so that everyone knows to get that into me, so we're not?
I mean, one of the things that, that, as a chairman of a committee, some of the things, some people just aren't able to meet on certain dates, whether it's just the three of us, it needs to do it for all four of us, and we really need to try to, if something happens, be able to move the dates, because, uh, otherwise we really disservice that board member, so, he's not in that committee, probably has valuable input, but isn't able to meet just because of personal circumstances.
Yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent. There should always be an effort to make sure all, all committee members are there.
I have a question real quick about, is this, okay, ask questions now, because I know it's a regular meeting, okay? Um, the policy, the ad hoc committees, or they, I hope you can change that.
They don't change.
Okay, yeah.
The ad hoc committees stay as put, unless they're dissolved and then reconstituted.
That's right, oh, so we cannot express, if we would have joined an ad hoc committee, we could not be appointing that unless?
Unless a member of that ad hoc committee resigns their position, or requests to be removed.
Okay.
Such as the policy committee, it's an ad hoc committee, if, if somebody wanted to step off of that committee, then Mr. Basil would be made aware that there's a position available, yeah, would anybody like to be on that ad hoc?
Unless as a board, we want to decide, that you want to terminate, like, for example, the policy committee, which is an ad hoc committee, which is in, in working on something, but if, if other board members want to be on part of that committee, and, and we decide we want to dissolve it and reconstitute it, I mean, as a board?
Reconstitute.
Yeah, as a board, we can dissolve it and reconstitute it, but it has to be dissolved.
Or, or, or all four board members say they prefer you off that committee, at that point you're not going to dissolve, if you're not dissolving it, or is it made justice vacancies available?
I was just wondering, because I thought ad hoc was different than, like?
I have a question, do we have a transportation ad hoc committee?
Not this year.
It never got dissolved.
So, we do have one?
I think it did.
No, Mr. Potts is chairing it, it never got dissolved.
So, that should be on this list?
And we can dissolve it?
Well, I don't know what, it's not serving any purpose, so I thought the purpose of the ad hoc committee was to?
Right, but it needs to be officially dissolved, and no votes are made to dissolve.
I thought we, I thought we voted it for a time period.
Uh-uh, no, ad hocks committees, until the job is done.
Or you give it a timeframe.
We don't, we never gave it a timeframe, it was we never gave it a timeframe.
My point is, one is, one, is there one, and two is, if there's not, do we need one?
Well, I think we're going to need one, because of the budget, so?
So, do I, that's my point, that's my point, so if we do, but I think we do need one, that's my first question. Second question is, is, it should be listed as, I, I don't know who's on it.
Well, it's Mr. Potts, and Mr. Wolf, and?
I think it's me.
And you, right.
But I think there's four.
I'm on it.
That's four, okay.
Yeah.
Again, you might want to list that.
We need to, uh?
Okay.
And I, I, I mean, again, I, I'd like to see things shuffle a little bit, so, if there's anybody, I'd be willing to, I'll be willing to step off transportation, because I've been on it for a decade, and let another board member step in there, and they'd like to, so I'll officially tender that resignation, so you've got one opening, at least on that committee, if somebody else would like to step into that committee.
Okay.
I think, I think there's always constant communication.
Correct, so I think you should, I think, that should be listed.
Yeah, we'll put that on here.
Can you do us a favor, Mr. Basil, put current members behind each one when you send this in, mind you?
Oh, yeah, when I send this out, I'll have a list of all the committees and the current members, and then, um, if people want to pull themselves off, and, you know, or if somebody else wants to sign up, then we can have that conversation, okay? All right. Any other questions about the committees? Okay, um, any other comments from the board?
Just, again, I'm, I'm clarifying, these committees stand, because number twenty, they stay in existence till the voting meeting in January, correct?
No. No, we're going to vote on them, we're going to vote on them in December.
Oh, we vote on them on the first meeting, okay, we do a special meeting on the first meeting?
On the seventeenth.
So, basically, they're, they're existing for about a month?
No, we, we vote on these things in December.
On the seventeenth.
Oh, we do, okay, right.
We changed that last year, because we wanted to give them?
Okay, well, because it says here they're existing for only two weeks then.
Right.
Okay, that's why I'm clarifying, because the current committee's only, because it's for two more weeks.
We moved it up a whole month.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. All right, I get it.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions from board members?
Yes, I'd just like to tell you, well, we're waiting actually three minutes, you are the one who found my story, coming here this?
No, we, we heard part of it, we did hear part of it.
I would just like to express my appreciation for the board, and I have a real appreciation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're probably keeping you waiting.
But we appreciate you making the effort to be here, so, um, any comments from the superintendent?
Yes, congratulations again to the board and to the officers, and I look forward again to, um, another year of working together with you, so, um, that was a fairly smooth transition, so congratulations to all of you.
Um, any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn this portion of the meeting, and, um, move on to our regular committee of the whole. Jump right in, superintendent? Yeah, hold on.
You want to, yeah, I'm going to have to announce that. No, no, I got to announce it, let me just, I got to pull up the agenda. Okay, so, yeah, under announcements, um, first, are there any edits to the agenda?
None.
Oh, yes, I would like to discuss this, uh, the results of student survey from last year, and the new business.
Okay, put that under fourteen B.
Can you please announce?
Okay, so, fourteen B, we're going to discuss the student survey. Okay, any other agenda edits?
Yes, can you please announce that I have to leave?
Uh, Mr. McCullough has to leave, uh, at this time, he has another engagement.
Sorry.
Thank you for being here, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, sorry.
Um, we will also be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss the negotiations and litigation, and having said that, um, procedures for public participation are in the inside jacket cover, on the blue cover of your agendas, you have three minutes to address the board, you'll come up to the podium, state your name and address, um, having said that, are there any public comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil, I'd like to start out with just reminding the public that over the next two months, we have a series of seasonal music concerts that are scheduled in all of our buildings, you can check our website, I would just like to invite all the members of the board and the public to come out and watch as the students perform, to help put everybody in, into the holiday spirit. All of the dates are posted out on the website, along with the specific times and locations of each event. Uh, I'd also like to, um, add in, in the, in the spirit of the holiday, to thank the cast and the crew of the musical Christmas Carol that was presented, uh, last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at our high school, I had the opportunity to go to the opening night show on Thursday night, um, the show was a great success, it's one of my favorite, um, one of my favorite plays of all time, and, uh, with our unofficial count of tickets, uh, we sold for the show about one thousand two hundred and twenty-five seats, so, Mr. Henkel, congratulations to your cast and crew at the high school, Mrs. Sanders and everybody, please pass that on, on our behalf, that, um, we thought that was a good start to the holiday season. Item B, the annual blood drive, again, which has, uh, become a, a tradition here at Boone, um, with the unfortunate passing of one of our former students. Uh, the 10th Annual Angela Hole Blood Drive will be held on Tuesday, December 18th, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, up at the high school. Uh, last year, we had over 400 registrants who donated more than 300 units of blood, which, as you know, helped to save the lives of over 1,000 people. So again, in the spirit of the holiday, I would like to encourage anyone who is able to make that kind of donation, uh, you can make your contact with Mrs. Bonnie Ebling, our head nurse at Daniel Boone High School, if you want to be a part of that, it's always a big event, and, uh, we look forward to anyone that can help us out in, in that effort. So that concludes my report, as we head into the holiday season.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Otto? Okay, seeing none, can we move into curriculum instruction?
Um, as you know, the meeting that we would've had scheduled for this Thursday night, um, we've been circulating around with, with you guys that, uh, we're going to hold a budget meeting in its place, so there will be, uh, no curriculum instruction meeting. Uh, the biggest pressing issue on the curriculum instruction end is getting the high school Course of Studies handbook done, which we can do next month.
I already spoke to Mr. Hankel on it, he's going to get, well, again, it's gonna be the new group with the new team, a copy of that added time to consider questions, we can get a lot of that hammered out prior to seeing it for the first time, so it does go back and forth. But I'd like to also look forward, I didn't receive a letter from, I, I, I assume a, a taxpayer resident, uh, there's no name, it's not signed, there's mail from LaValle saying that, uh, the person very much disagrees with, uh, our potential approach of allowing courses, take honor courses and AP courses, that it dilutes the, the, uh, the instruction and they're very against it, but, uh, I'd, I'd like to reply, but it was no names.
Anonymous.
The address, the attorney address.
Okay. Okay, any, um, board questions or comments for curriculum instruction? Okay, seeing none, any public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to buildings and grounds.
Under buildings and grounds, I'd like to update you on the annexed kitchen plan. Uh, we had promised to come back to you with a recommendation after we further explored the feasibility of reopening the annexed kitchens at the high school. Uh, we developed a plan, and, and we worked with a firm for a quote, and based on the work that we wanted to do, the total cost for that plan was going to be somewhere around 125,000, that was a slight increase and a little bit of a, I don't wanna say a shock, but a little more than we had expected. Uh, we were happy with the template and the blueprint for the plan, that, that put together the things that we needed to do. Uh, we had worked with SDE as far as, uh, getting the waiver on the hood, that really wasn't going to be an issue, but unfortunately, as, as many of these things do, it comes down to the money. After we did the financial analysis, uh, we have decided, I think collectively between Mr. Smith, Mrs. Penza, and myself, that this just is not fiscally responsible to move forward with the plan at this point. Programmatically, it's a great idea. Um, fiscally, I, we simply take, took a look at the money, um, but the total cost that I quoted you being about $25,000 higher than we anticipated, and the available funds that we would've had to use to dip, they would've gone too far into the reserves of the cafeteria fund, and, and we felt they would leave us precariously in, with a low reserve, because you need that money in order, if there are any, are, any repairs that are needed for emergencies, and it would've taken them to a point where we were not comfortable with it. We're going to keep the plan, uh, on file, and, and we're going to attempt to try to set aside funds in smaller amounts, maybe over a year or two, in a more dedicated fund, until we have a large enough reserve to be able to come to implement the plan in what we feel is a, a financially responsible way. I don't wanna just jump into this and, and have it, and have us run precariously low, because if we would have to rely on a, have an emergency repair anywhere else, we would have to dip into taxpayer funds in order to do that.
Should we look at the, maybe the two-step process, or we do certain aspect of this year, and then more of the next year?
We can look at that, I'd like to take it back to the facilities committee, I'd like to take it back to the facilities committee, I don't wanna give up on it, I just, going full force this year, we had promised that maybe by next September, we could do it, I don't think financially that's feasible at this point. So if there's any other questions on that, um, I've talked to Mr. Hankel about it, we were a little disappointed, but we had to be honest with the financial analysis, and we didn't feel like it just was responsible to move forward this time, to take 100, basically the reserve tops out at about 170,000, and we thought to take 125,000 out of that was just putting us, no, she's shaking her head, no.
Right.
Oh, she's shaking her head, yes. We thought that would put us a little bit, uh, too close to the edge, in case there was anything, any time else we needed money. Because the way that the fund works is the, there's no real capital reserve kind of, if you will, as an analogy, in the cafeteria fund, it's just all the money's kind of in one pot, and we didn't really want to, um, put ourselves, just repeating myself, in a position that just, um, I couldn't get it past my business manager after I looked at it, I, I wasn't too happy with the financial plan, but I'm very, very excited about the plan itself, and I'm just glad that Mr. Hankel brought it forward, and I, I think eventually we can get it done, I just think, as Mr. McLaughlin may have suggested, biting off all of that at one time is just a little bit too much. So we'll take it back to facilities and, and try to come up with, uh, some creative ways of, and I think that's a good idea, of finding a way to get it done, I just don't think for September it's realistic.
We're still gonna move forward with trying to be grandfathered, but...
That's not a problem, that's, that was not a problem, that was taken care of.
That was...
Yes, that was actually resolved.
I'm sure I heard that.
I may, I may not have said it, but yes, I'm glad you asked that, that, that issue has been resolved, and that won't be an issue going forward. It's just that there's a lot of, um, to do the area the way we would like to do it, uh, requires, uh, a little bit more work than we originally anticipated, in terms of running some gas lines and other things like that.
Okay.
So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or we'll, we'll take it, as I said, if you're happy with that, we'll take it back to facilities and, and we'll work, and, and see what we can do from there.
Okay, any questions?
What do you plan on actually utilizing that annex, something that could be this full year, or are we that close to dealing with fully transitioning that all the way into next year now? I know you're working on this, but...
This cafeteria plan?
Right.
This would not go into effect next year, we wouldn't be able to, because there's, there's, um, first of all, we can't start on it without any funding, so it would have, it's at least a year out.
So the study hall that they currently have will stay as a study hall, that room?
I don't, I don't, I haven't heard anything in, in terms of how that would change. Uh, Mr. Hankel, is there anything in, in that regard that would change?
I didn't hear what you said.
Do you wanna just...
The, the study hall room, the, um...
Goes on the one side?
Yeah. Is that gonna stay as our study hall area where the honor students go for their break?
Oh, the student unit?
Yeah, the student unit.
I would say, I don't pretend it's really how it looks today, but we just wanna see where this went before we put it forward.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll take all of that under consideration and then, and move forward appropriately.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public? All right, let's move on to finance.
Uh, we will have course approvals for you on the 17th. Um, we'll be actually going out to bid for the BCIU, for those general supplies that you see listed there, as we annually do. We are, uh, going to accept, as long as you do, a $500 donation from Daniel Boone Optimist Club, just like to thank them at this point, uh, for that donation. Last year, we put it toward, um, I think partially toward the, the purchase of a whiteboard, um, not sure exactly how we plan to use that yet this year.
Does the Optimis, Optimist Club have any suggestions, how they like to see?
We can certainly consult with them, that's not a problem. They generally don't put any strings on it, but we can certainly ask them if they have suggestions, and we can offer them suggestions as well.
Okay.
Item D is really there as a discussion item, so Mr. Basil, I'll turn that over to you for budget planning meetings for 2013, 14.
Right, so, um, obviously, we've got a budget meeting scheduled for Thursday, um, looking out over the next couple of months, is there a particular night of the month that works best for most board members that we can arrange for a meeting? Is what I want people to start thinking about, so that when we get to the meeting on the 6th, everyone's got a couple of dates in their head for January, and then a couple of dates in their head for February, and maybe a couple of dates in March, that we can go ahead and book these meetings ahead of time. I know people's schedules will change, and we may have some, have some flexibility there, but it's tough enough getting our nine schedules together, um, as is, so...
One of the things that worked out well, I asked, is we, besides the extra night or whatever it was, that we used the, part of the committee of the whole to discuss maybe one line item on the topic, so that we didn't try to bite it all up at one time, um, I'd recommend we try to do that, I mean, these, these meetings tend to go quickly, so if we could, you know, take one line item, whatever, whatever one we wanna do, and so we're gonna discuss, you know, this one here, and work that around, that way, we, we're all here anyways, so let's hit, hit that, and, and use that maybe possibly one at a voting meeting at the end, you know, adjourn, and then just discuss, use the time we're all here, is all I'm saying, not, not dragging out till 11 o'clock, but, you know, add an extra 50 or 20 minutes at the end to discuss it, and maybe take it in a little more in depth when we get together at another time, or maybe put it to rest right then and there.
Or, or just commit, you know, at 6:30, because, you know, a lot of times, we'll just have the separate meetings, we do them at 6:30 anyway, so...
Right, right.
You know, the night we're gonna have a meeting.
Commit at 6:30, start the budgetary meeting, adjourn, go right into the voting meeting or something.
Go for it.
We've used that model before.
And that way, we're only out...
That way, we're not bumping the committee meeting.
Right. I would need to go after the meeting, but that's just me, probably outnumbered. I do like that idea of having the same, you know... Or maybe, or maybe start the board meeting at 6:30, and then do it afterwards, either way you're up to getting it. Yeah, I'm only one board member.
Okay, all right, well, everyone, um, bring some ideas to the table, and Thursday night, the other thing was, um, Ms. Penza had sent around to everyone, um, the financial documents and, and the Excel spreadsheet, so if you haven't taken a look at them yet, please take a look at them, uh, they called me today looking for some direction in terms of what topics we wanted to talk about for Thursdays, that she, she could bring to the table whatever information was required, um, so if there's something you guys, if, if you start reviewing the, the financial statements, or something that leaves out to you, that you have a question on, um, by all means, don't hesitate to email Ms. Penza immediately with your questions, so that she can, um, bring that documentation to the table for Thursday night, because if you have a question about it, probably somebody else on the board has the same question.
Again, recommending again, when we get together Thursday, that we try not to bite off the entire thing, talk about taking one or two things.
Yeah, I think my approach to this was, maybe, the finance committee had the benefit of sitting down with Dr. Otto and, and Ms. Penza, and actually running through it for a while, there were some questions that came out of that, um, I have to pull up what those questions were again, and, uh, review them, but I think maybe an initial pass-through for the benefit of everybody else, that everybody understands what documents they're looking at and how they tie together, it's not that complicated, but, um, you know, 15 minutes to run through things, uh, so everyone has a better understanding of what documents they're looking at, and then we can actually, um, pick the subject, so that's the other thing we can do, too, is if people are passionate about a certain area, we wanna start with, um, let's start throwing out some suggestions, so that we have an agenda for Thursday night. Okay? If nobody has any suggestions, then I'll just try to work up an agenda for Thursday night, and then I'll run that by, um, with, with the business, uh, office and Dr. Otto, and we'll run that out there to the rest of you.
We have an idea when that was sent out, because, uh, I remember a spreadsheet, but I don't remember any other documentation.
Dr. Otto sent it with a board update.
It was when on a Friday.
If anybody's missing anything, just let us know, we'll get it to you tomorrow.
Probably back, um...
November 1st?
Uh, no, it had to have been after November 1st, because we met as a finance committee, it was after the committee of the whole meeting, I think.
But I haven't, I haven't dated.
Yeah, that may be the date of, of the document, but I think all the supporting documents went out either right after the finance committee meeting, which was like the 6th or something like that, and, uh, or went right out after the, uh, committee of the whole.
The Friday of that committee of the whole.
November 16th.
Yeah, November 16th. Okay?
This meeting is gonna be held at the district board...
Yes, let me just, for the benefit of, for the public and anyone who takes an interest in our budget meetings, uh, as you see here, the, with the, uh, flowers lined up here, the...
Point says...
Slipping my mind here, they're all over my house, too, uh, but the point says here, this room is occupied Thursday night, so we certainly don't wanna kick them out of here. Uh, we'll see you all at the Matthew Brook Building, back at our original location. Again, just, it's a little hairy down there with the construction going on, but at night it's usually pretty good. So, uh, we'll be in that building again on Thursday night, starting at 7:00 PM.
Okay, any other comments? All right, uh, moving on to budgetary transfers.
Yes, and then you will have, uh, your budgetary transfers, which are attached for you.
Okay, um, any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel.
Uh, items A and B, we'll, um, we'll ask for your support and vote on those two items. Item C, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shaheen for a brief conversation to the, for the approval of the confidential secretary's compensation plan.
Yeah, we had all agreed on this in the executive session, I thought Mr. Supers had finished, but apparently he's waiting for something, so I'm gonna get on in tomorrow, and we'll have the finalized document back, uh, before we'll try to get out in the middle of the beginning of next week for you, but, uh, it was a, I believe it was a two-year agreement, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll, we'll just make sure you get the, the document.
And when we're all here, what it was, we'll make a call, and we agree to it, so...
Okay.
That's it, under that section.
Any questions or comments?
None there, but if I can back up just for a second, I apologize, for our budget planning meeting, could you, Dr. Otto, have a, um, overhead projector, just, just in the event we, we decide we wanna, um, show some things?
Sure, we...
Project some, some...
You mean the...
Spreadsheets or something?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever technology you need, just let me know.
Yeah, yeah, again, the, uh, the Proxima, because a number of taxpayers had some concern that we're talking about spreadsheets that they can't see.
Right.
That's fine.
It'd be nice to be able to roll that spreadsheet up on...
We can, yep.
The side wall projector, and they would be able to see what we're talking about.
Yep.
Or at least some things, I'm, I'm not...
Not a problem.
We'd use it, yeah, or even if we'd use it, but I'd like to know it's...
Absolutely. Actually, that room lends itself more to that than this room anyway, so we can do that, that's not a problem.
Okay, good, um, good observation, Mr. Sermon here, nope.
We tried it here last year, listen.
Any other board comments or questions? Suggestions? Okay, moving on to, um, public comment on, uh, personnel? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to programs.
You have your monthly enrollment report attached for your review. Item B, um, I would like to just stop and pause on this one, if you, you have it at your, on your screen, uh, it's a draft of the board meeting dates, starting in January. Again, it's important to point out the exceptions, generally for the benefit of the public, uh, we're a second and fourth, we're a second and fourth Monday board. Um, next year, that schedule, um, has an exception in May, due to Memorial Day being a national holiday, and then again in December, as we did this year with the reorganization meeting having to occur as close as possible to the first of the month, so those are the only exceptions to the second and fourth, and again, for the public's benefit, unless the board declares so, we do not meet in July.
Okay.
So that just, that needs to be officially voted on the 17th. Uh, item C, uh, the 213, 213, uh, 2013-14 school calendar, I would like to, generally, this is just kind of a routine approval, but I would like to stop and pause for a little bit, and narrate a little bit here for the benefit, especially for the public, and as well as the board, because you do obviously interface with the, with your constituents. You will see that what we've done this year, um, is made one significant change to revise how we make up snow emergency days. Our current practice, and I don't know how long it's been going on, I, I'm just gonna say it's longstanding, has been to make up days by first adding three days to the end of the year, and then work back, taking Easter Monday and the Thursday before Easter. And then if we need more, then we just turn around and tack them on at the end of the year in June. The change we are recommending is to flip that process to make up days by first using the Monday after Thanksgiving as a make-up day, and that would only be if we had one of these emergency events that we've had the last two years, otherwise, we would just leave that day alone, because usually that comes and goes without any fanfare. And then based on when we would need the days, to make our next make-up day President's Day in, um, February, and then the two days around Easter, and then all the other days would be added on in June.
Dr. Otto, if I may just stop you there, I, I could send an email, I, I don't, I do not support that process for the simple reason that you'll have a lot of empty chairs in the school, that Monday after Thanksgiving...
Oh, you mean that particular Monday?
That Monday after Thanksgiving is the opening day of the game season, that's...
Well, this is, again, this is all subject...
Let me tell you, you're gonna, you're gonna have all kinds of students missing, families also, because they get the entire week off prior for that holiday, are gone.
It's just a suggestion.
And so, again, I'm, I, I don't, I, I understand what you're doing, but you'll be one of the few school districts that'll be in session, and, um...
Well, let me finish.
A lot of absenteeism, uh, at that point, so...
But let me move past that, our primary rationale for the other make-up days earlier in the year is that we believe it will have, will have a better focus on instruction and learning, and we tend to find that the days added in June tend to be less intensive in, 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 in that area specifically. And, um, so that's the first thing, if, if you're interested in that part of the plan, and I understand, again, this is a community issue, this is not me trying to dictate a calendar, this obviously needs your input, so whatever you feel works best, and what you hear from the community, and what you would like to see...
I have less problems with Thursday before Easter than I do with that Monday.
That, and, and more than likely, we've just had two years in a row where we've had some strange weather, with hurricanes and things like that, so...
Yeah, what I don't wanna happen is somebody that may be on the cusp of that, that, taking that day off, and then they're requiring the doctor's note because they exceed their absence, or there's a test that day, or whatever else you got scheduled, where it's been in place for, God knows how long, it's in Pennsylvania, and the businesses that close that day.
What, what we do is, we change the in-service day, this is just kind of a media network, on November 26th, this is emergency backup day, and you made that Monday the in-service day.
There you go.
Would that...
There's a number of things we can do, if you don't wanna use it that way.
Make Monday the...
We'd have to take it, if you're gonna reject that, we have to take it back and bring something back to you. Because obviously, tonight's not a vote, so...
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Shaheen, I'm thinking we should, I, I'm good with the, the generalized...
Second half?
I, I think that Monday is just...
Untouchable?
I mean, flip-flop the 25th and 3rd possibly, Monday the 25th and...
We really don't, we'll find a way to make it work without it, we really, I mean, just throwing it out there.
I think, I think, again, it's, it's gonna write a passage for 16-year-olds, or whatever else, that, that Monday they're off, and they're in the woods with their father, or whatever.
I understand that completely, or, you have to understand that our emphasis is to just try to find the best days for instruction, and it may not be the best one, but, um, when we looked at the other days, you know, when you get into the, the turn, into the new year, um, we, we, we think that, um, I honestly think you would get some, some pushback on those days around Easter as well, because people use that to travel. It's just a decision that we're recommending to you as an administration, we do believe that when you start tacking days on in June, it's, people get into shutdown mode, I hate to say it, but it's human nature.
I, I wouldn't wanna add another day in the month of June either, or something.
But to go back, are we also proposing that that change is going to take effect from this...
Well, that's, that's item D, so let me roll over into the conversation about...
Before we get to that, I would just also, I would voice some concern around the Easter holiday, just because I see we've got a couple, three days off there, but I think for some families, it's a religious holiday, and Good Friday and Easter Monday typically, for some folks, um, is pretty important to them, so I don't know about the Thursday before, you know, at the end of the day, if we're just talking about the Monday after Thanksgiving and a third, and, and one or two days around Easter, locking them in, I just think that, plus, kids probably need a break sometime in March, um, if you're gonna give up something in February, you're going from January straight through till May or June, uh, that's a long time without a break.
Again, I, I think we...
There's a lot, again, we could, we could go around with this, there's a lot of ways to look at it.
It's a new service day, so, you know, flip-flop the 25th and December 3rd, and you get a new service at the Monday after Thanksgiving versus, um...
Yeah, I was referring to April, Easter.
We're looking at the wrong one here.
Oh, you're gonna pick it on there.
Yeah, that's 2000.
Sixteenth?
16th and 21st.
Yeah, I mean, you got a whole week off there, and, almost, uh, at Easter, and I'm not saying don't take advantage of some of those days, but...
And to be quite honest with you, we get a lot of snow, this, either one of these plans just...
Maybe you could even...
Kinda gets blown up.
Maybe you could even put it back a little bit. On the twenty-sixth, maybe put it back to the twenty-third or twenty-seventh, well, maybe not the twenty-third, we're starting...
Uh, let me say this, if you liked the way we did the old calendar, we'll just reimplement that. It really, we were just looking at, we know that those days at the end tend to get lost.
I, I think, I think you got a good idea, which is to start filling in with some of these extra days, I mean Presidents' Day and some of these other things I think you can, you can give up, um, because I agree, I don't think kids are focused on school when you get to the end of June. Um, so it's probably time better served.
It would be interesting to see what other districts do, did you look at other district calendars?
It's, it's all, it's, it varies. It's just, it varies. It's very much a community, it's a community issue. That's why I say it's, this is a, a time when I think we need to be in sync with the community, well, as always, but I think even more with the calendar because, you know, the families of the community are, are, are planning a lot of things and, and we certainly don't want to, uh, step on anyone's toes, but at the same time, as superintendent, I, I, I don't wanna represent that we think the best way to do that is to end the year with, you know, keep tacking days on and people, but sometimes you just don't have that choice.
This was the first year we used the new calendar, correct?
No, no, no.
Which was, I thought when I came in, we voted on changing the calendar last year to this new one where they had ten days off it.
No, that was just, the way the calendar fell, that happened to work that way, that's not really part of this conversation. Just the way we, we, the, the days fall, sometimes you get longer breaks around Thanksgiving or Easter.
When was the last, did it date last year when you graduated on the snow days and all that? Do you remember? I mean, it was my graduation.
Actually, we, we only lost one day last year, and that was that Halloween snow.
Okay.
We had such a, a, a very, very mild winter last year that we only wound up using one snow day. And we, and we add, according to our calendar, we added that on, so there was one day tacked on to the end of, I don't recall the date, Connor.
Even, I mean, June's, whatever we scheduled to end it next year with this, uh, potential calendar, June fifth, I mean, you could push that back a little bit too.
See, this is, I, I can honestly tell you, this is what we were worried about this year. If you go to the two thousand twelve thirteen, we try to get graduation and, 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 and a lot of this conversation was spurred by some questions from board members about when is graduation going to be, we don't really like to nail that down until we get through the snow season. But if you consider that we've already, because of the hurricane season, cashed in two days, uh, we're already, um, up to that Friday. So any new day that we use wraps us around into a new week, it has an impact.
Well, those bracketed days on the sixth and seventh are actually gonna be school days this year, correct?
Yes, they are now.
They are now. So we're looking at, if, if nothing else happens, graduation at the earliest would be...
It'd have to, you can graduate early, it comes at a...
Say, the earliest we would graduate kids would be the, the, the seventh, maybe.
Correct.
Uh, at the, at that day.
And the Fridays tend to be an ideal day for graduations for travel and things like that.
And provided we get no snow, we have no snow day, we're into the following week.
You're on to June tenth.
Now, you just said we can, we can graduate early.
You can, you can designate a graduation day, but when you send...
We have graduated earlier before when the kids...
You do take a minor, you take a minor subsidy hit for that, it does cost you some money.
Substantial money?
No, well, at this point, the way the budget is, every dollar is substantial, so...
So e- even if we do hit another snow day, we can still graduate on the day.
Or on the seventh.
I think we could wait and see. I mean, I know we want to have...
If you have more snow days, you're gonna use your February and your March.
But I'm saying even, but even if we had to roll extra days into the school year or the following Monday and Tuesday, we could still graduate that Friday. Again...
I do, I do think that for this year, you could probably bank on a certain percentage of families have already planned something for Easter. They probably have.
Right.
So this year might not be the best time to do it, I just, there's never a good time to do it.
Again, to Mr. Kurtz's point, and then we'll, we'll let it go, that if, if, um, we have two more snow days, okay, and we get hit a couple blizzards, we gotta add two more snow days into it, and we gotta add days to the end of the year because we don't take them off anywhere else, we could still graduate kids, our, our seniors, on Friday the seventh and still have the balance of the school population to school that following Monday.
That's correct.
Can you give back a little bit of how much of a subsidy hit we would take?
Sure. There's a way to calculate that.
All right.
Hopefully, if we...
So the consensus is you don't want to touch two thousand twelve thirteen calendar, we'll just put that, put that away. That's okay, I mean, I just wanted to know, I wanted to put it out there. So that's all. That won't come back for a vote, nothing for this year. So on two thousand thirteen fourteen, you want to see December second stay the way it had been, as, as I understand, that's...
The Monday for Thanksgiving.
Hunting, Hunting Monday, I'll call it.
Right.
Okay? So we won't touch that one. The, uh, I understand, that's a community, it's a community issue, I, I understand that fully.
But again, I would just reiterate my idea, you could always make that in-service day. I could definitely make this work, I mean, have the staff come in that day, make your emergency day the twenty-sixth.
The Monday before, yeah. Yeah, like, just switch...
Yeah, well, we'll take a look at that. Um, is there any support for at least, it, it sounds to me like there's a certain segment here on the board that's not interested in touching the Easter holiday.
No, I didn't say that, I said, oh, you're proposing...
I'm, I'm asking, I'm not...
I think you could take a couple of days from the Easter holiday, but I wouldn't take all the days out of the Easter.
Well, we would only, as you see here, you'd still have Holy Thursday.
Just gonna take the Wednesday and the, and the following Monday.
You'd take the Wednesday and the Monday. We wouldn't, we weren't proposing Holy Thursday or Good Friday.
And, and let's not, let's not, you know, rank them, because if we only need to take one, then still give them, still let them have the seventeenth of February off so you, you don't go from, and take one of the holidays in April, I mean, if you only need one, let's, let's strike them a day.
Well, part of that's predicated when you set up the schedule, once you pass that day, obviously you can't use it.
Well, understood that.
Like, if you got a snowstorm on February twenty-fifth, well, then you're locked into something later, so, um...
That's maybe not plastic, so.
So, uh, you never know with the weather, it's been going, so we're saying then just...
Actually, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Are we losing the, the Hunting Monday? That's it to this calendar?
And the answer is yes, but I think, I think that's what...
Is that the consensus? Okay. Thank you. That concludes my report under program.
Any other questions or comments from board members on the calendars? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public on the calendars? Or programs in general?
And I'd like to thank Mrs. Torshin, she did help me tremendously with, uh, in her new role, uh, with putting those calendars together.
Yeah, please.
Just with regards to the proposed provision to the current school year calendar, I was proposing that if we have snow days that we take February off Presidents' Day, if they're like hearing that you don't want to take that to the next snow day, that you'd rather write it to Easter to break.
Well, that's still an option.
That would be the first provision that we...
That would stay away from the Easter day.
I'd rather see you take Presidents' Day than Easter, that's my personal opinion, but...
That would be the first one, and then we have no other recourse left.
But, but Thursday, uh, uh, yes.
Correct, and that, that is the way they set up, I was just trying to throw it on it every day, making it more Easter break.
My apologies, I didn't explain that correctly.
And I, and I understand what you're saying.
So let me, let me amend my comments. For the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, we will stay away from anything except we will, you make our first, our next first make up day if we still have available Presidents' Day. Is that what you're saying?
And if you revise the calendar because it's not set up that way.
Oh, I, that would take board approval, only you can do that. We, we as the administration can't alter the calendar.
And then the seventeenth of, um, I'm sorry, the eighteenth of February as our next snow day, because that would be our pair of ones, since we're already adding two days going to the end of the school year currently, rather than go to the third school, or our third day of the end of the year, use that February eighteenth and then...
The twenty-eighth of March.
And then the twenty-eighth of March.
Right.
Yes. And then the first would be the next one as opposed originally. And then we add another day at the end of the school year if we had to go for the fifth day.
Yeah, I don't have any objections on that.
What she said.
Right, right, that way, that was...
So we'll bring it back for a vote that way, eight on the seventeenth. Thank you, Mrs. Torshin.
Okay, any other comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, policies?
Yes, just scrolling to that page. Okay, let me segment this conversation for you. All of the second readings have been edited according to the feedback that, uh, was brought forward at the last meeting. All the new changes are in italics for your review, let me just rehash what they were. Uh, policy C, one nineteen homework, had some wording revision, nothing substantive, but there was a request to make some change. Uh, E, policy one twenty on instructional material, I believe, Mr. Connor, that was your desire to get public, the, the ability to look at that, that change has been made, and I'd...
Now, again...
Just a quick question.
Residents, you wanted anybody to be able to...
I don't think it would be helpful for anybody, I mean...
Well, district resident...
Well, like, you're not a district resident, why is it, I mean, anybody, anybody anywhere, I mean, if they want to see it, they come here, I mean, are we gonna ask them, do you live in Daniel Boone if they say, no, I live in Pottstown, are we gonna not let them see it? I mean, I don't see why...
I don't know, I, I, I would say no, we wouldn't, I don't know if you want to put that in policy that, that way, I mean, we wouldn't preclude them doing it.
I, I just say public, I mean, there's something that's not secret, right?
No, it certainly is not.
Is this, is this assessments, is that test?
Spirit of the president.
Yes, yes.
Make a public...
Now, we can reword that to the general public.
No, it's second reading of the...
That is correct. I just want to, and item K, there was a request to put, um, include marching band in as that based on the rigorous, uh, workout that they have in the summer as well, so that's been included under sudden cardiac arrest, so that's items A through K. That's what we recall, uh, as the edits for the, the second readings, and they will come forward on the seventeenth. Once they're approved, they will become policy.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Any questions on that part of it, as I'm gonna move on to the next section? Okay, items L through down to R. Our first readings, and again, just to instruct the board, um, first readings don't get to this agenda until they've been through the policy review committee at least once. We are still, we're getting toward the end, Mr. McMillan and I are getting toward the end of our one hundred series. Obviously, they are first readings and do not need approval, they just need feedback at this point. But I do want to point out to you, uh, for the first time here, we have deletion of some policies, and the reason you would do that is when the policies become so outmoded that they no longer apply at all. These policies were, I think, the, the dates are number in the late eighties and early nineties. So they, things have changed in those areas, uh, that you see there listed with, uh, student assistance. Student assistance programs are now dealt with strategically or policy-wise and wording-wise through the implementation of a district's strategic plan. So the rewrite that you see of policy O, first reading of revised policy one twenty-three, actually takes the place then of items T and U. It takes care of all of the stuff that used to be in there, it's been done and modified according to school code changes and to the law. So it's, the bottom line is that policy deals with our, our mandate actually to have in place student assistance programming, um, to help students with developmental needs and, and issues in that area. So the wording is all there for you. Um, it's a rather lengthy set, but we're, we're very happy with our progress in the policy committee, and we'll keep funneling them in as, as we get them done.
How does policy one twenty-five differ from, uh, which one was it, Mr. Kurtz? On instructional material, one from one?
They're actually very similar. They just, the PSBA advises that you have one in each area, you'll find the wording very similar.
I was reading them, I didn't see a lot of difference.
Right, no, it's not. It's, it's, they're very similar. A lot of districts have, they're, they're very fine shades of, of difference between the two of them. Curriculum is a little bit different than instructional material, but it's really the same concept. It's the provision in the school code that requires school districts to allow that to happen. It's really about the basis of it is. And that concludes policy.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, um, transportation, anything to report?
No report. Tonight on transportation.
Okay, moving on to old business.
Okay, a couple things here. Um, the advertising plan, uh, item A for the public that's following here tonight, the advertising plan for the new election regions. Board members, um, I included in my packet my best attempt, and Mr. Subers has, um, let me pull it off the top here. Mr. Subers looks like this, I know it's a little bit tiny with the mat, but Mr. Subers has reviewed it. Um, this is actually what we have all, this is all, I just want to make it clear, there's, there can't be any changes in the, in what happened here, how we represent, how it changed, that certainly is, is subject to. Um, if you see any things that don't seem clear, I actually showed this to a few people in the office to just read it cold to make sure it made sense. In some ways, it may be complicated to some people, and, and I think part of the advertising campaign will be to, to minimize the pain of understanding it. But basically, this information sheet is what I'd like to use to properly notify the public because I think this is an important change in our school district. Um, I've, as I said, I made sure Mr. Subers reviewed it from a legal standpoint, and he's actually, as an attorney, very good with wording as well, so he's taken a look at the wording, I'm sure you all had a chance to read it. Uh, but my plan going forward, as, as soon as you're okay with it, is to get this out there and post this information on the website, mail a copy to every household in the community using our census information, ask our local newspapers to publish it, the Mercury and the, and the Reading Paper, and the News of Southern Berks to publish it as a public service announcement, and then I would also like to do a connect ed because that will also reach at least the segment of our population that's, that interacts with the school on a daily basis.
I think you also need to get that out to the townships.
If, if you can think, let me, if you think of any other means of advertising, I'll certainly add them to my list.
Of everything you've listed, I support, I would not incur the cost of that to mail this out. I mean, everything else we got...
Are you sure?
I'm positive. The newspapers, everything else we got going on, you want to put it in the Winkley Fire Center, hope the kids do see packets, do that?
My only concern is for people who don't have children in the schools.
Well, they get, it's newspaper, it's gonna be a, I, I just look, I mean, we're talking about a tough budget and you're mailing out two thousand copies of this.
It's gonna be more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I, no, I, I definitely, the only, I, I, I mean, I don't know why...
Just, I, just so you under, I, I understand what you're saying, my rationale is just max exposure.
I, I understand maximum exposure, uh, but mailing this thing out would, uh, I, I think it would be too expensive for us.
Understand, unless, just the last thing I want is when somebody comes up to the, to vote in April on the primary, they don't know what's going on, so I, I want to try to avoid that the best we can.
Are there, um...
They're gonna still vote at the same spot.
Oh, that, not, as you notice on here, none of that, that's not impacted, I, I think they...
I mean, it just matters where the board member that is gonna appear on their ballot comes from.
I would also ask, can you include it in the, I believe it's called blazing trails district newsletter?
I can include it everywhere.
I just wouldn't mail a copy.
Yeah, I, I would worry about the expense.
Is there consensus on the board not to mail this?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would say expect money to mail.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I could think of is if there's, um, you know, these national parties that get the vote out type of thing, they send flyers, you know, um, maybe reaching out to the local Democratic and Republican parties and just notifying them and, and, you know, they can then notify, if they choose to, their voter registration lists of what the changes are.
I mean, you, you know, you go and you vote, I go to the vote in St. Paul's Church, I'm still gonna vote there.
Right, none of that's gonna change.
A number of whatever it tells them to vote for, for school board.
I have a question real quick, I know we used to send out the district newsletter in the mail, I think we stopped.
We stopped doing that, that was a request of the board.
Yeah, do the municipalities still do that? I don't have any township ones in Ohio.
Union township sends out a...
Maybe they could include it, I mean, it's very relevant for their citizens as well, and I mean, that would be...
I'll make contact, I'll, I'll begin tomorrow. I mean, once, if you're okay with what's on here, I'm gonna get started. Time is, the, the primary's coming.
Right.
So I'll get started, if, if there are no further questions on that, I'll, I'll get it on the web tomorrow. That'll be at least the fir, a start, and then we can start, you know, working with the other areas that I talked about.
Okay. Okay, moving on to VOTEC.
Uh, there had been a request, um, Mr. Henkel had done some legwork in, in clarifying for us, they offered to put something in writing for us, that, that draft letter was included in your packet. Um, if there's anyone that has any questions about that, I, I think Mr. Henkel and I are are safe in saying we think that satisfies the requirement. Mr. Wolf, have you had a chance to look at this, you're okay with it?
Well, thank you, Dr. Rod and Mr. Henkel for following up on that, the, the, here's that the, the courses that are the most at risk are, would be held at the center anyway for our students.
Right.
So, the, uh, would be a factor.
So, we'll make sure they commit this to a, as this is a draft, we'll get an official copy of this and keep it on file. Uh, item C, Mr. Basil, that was your request, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Yep, I have a mea culpa, um, a gentleman had, um, brought to our attention last December, I believe it was, a group called Market Street Sports Group, as a group that works with school districts to help them advertise, or work on an advertising campaign in the schools. Um, he did provide the district with some information on this group, and either it's my fault or, uh, something, I'll take responsibility for it, uh, between the transition, between me stepping off the REC and the new REC group, this information was not passed on to the new REC, uh, members, and so it was never really followed up on. Uh, the gentleman sent me an email on it, uh, about a week ago, asking about what had happened with this, uh, this group, and whether we'd reached out to them, and I had to let him know that, quite frankly, I think I dropped the ball on it, or it slipped through the cracks, one of the two, and, or both. So, I'm bringing it back up to your attention, I sent that information around to you guys again, uh, as part of, of this, um, committee, the whole, uh, um, appendices, and, um, so take a look at it, I think it's another group that we should reach out to, similar to school media, and, um, enlist them in, in coming up with ideas, or a, uh, an overall marketing strategy for the school district to help us, uh, bring in some advertising dollars. I think also as part of that supplemental, I, I just provided the board with a whole bunch of different articles and stuff like that, that we had looked at as part of the Revenue Enhancement Committee, going back to like 2008, '09, and '10, of just advertising in schools in general, and so on and so forth.
Wasn't this, again, going back, wasn't this the one where they were proud of Wilson? Cause they had stuff about the United States Army and the gymnasium or something?
I don't know, um, this one's out of, these guys are based out of Lancaster.
Well, they, they meant...
They had worked with Wilson.
I think they had worked with Wilson.
And there was an issue, but it was, it was rectified.
I think it was resolved.
Right.
I can certainly, when we take that back to committee, we can reach out to Wilson and see where they stand with that.
We just, we, we, just like we did with the other one, just that we wanna have, you know, rights to review what you've put in right before you get up, and, and have some control for that.
Yeah, so what are we gonna be voting on?
We're not really voting on this, I just brought this up, cause this is committee of the whole meeting, so this was just, I wanted...
This is our old business, second...
Yeah, old business, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, that, um, it was brought up before by a member of the public, and, um, it was not disseminated to the entire board, I wanted the entire board to be aware of it, and then I, I gave it to, uh, Ms. Hamill, as the chairman of the Revenue Enhancement Committee, uh, and asked her if she wouldn't follow up with it through her group or through the administration, to come up with a plan and work, um, with as many vendors as possible to help us generate some advertising dollars. So, I just wanted you as a board to be aware of it, have the same information that I had, um, that was shared with me and the rest of the board, okay?
And you're getting it at the same time I'm getting it, I'm in Hammond's.
Right.
You know, this, this must have slipped through the cracks, I was chairing that committee too, I honestly don't remember seeing it, so...
I, I remember I was looking about it, I remember...
He came up in a meeting, it was either a voting meeting, or it was a, um, committee of the whole meeting, and addressed the entire board with it, and...
As I recall, we kinda, when we heard that there was a problem at Wilson, we kinda backed off a little bit on it, so I don't know, maybe that was the reason.
Is there, is there a conflict with this, what we're also...
No, I think it's...
I mean, with that percentage of advertising allowed on the school?
I, I don't think it has anything to do with that, if, these guys seem to come up, from what I read here, it looks like they just tried to think of many different ways to add, you know, provide advertising in schools, uh, whether it's...
Yeah, if you looked at it, they, they renamed the gymnasium after a credit union, or naming rights they did, and...
And we have that policy in place.
But it's, they went in for, for, for the district, so...
I think, quite frankly, we shouldn't, we shouldn't really hitch our wagon to one vendor anyways, so if there's multiple vendors that we can work with, uh, to help us...
But I can't believe we don't, what that percentage is, we're gonna dedicate the state of the high school.
Well, Mr. Subers is actually, to bring that up, he's putting together, you know, some contract language to share with school media to see where that goes.
But we won't know until we talk to this group and see what they can do for us, and see what they've done for other school districts, so, anyway, that was my, I just wanted to bring that out with the entire board, so everybody's aware of it, and, uh, hopefully we can pick up, pick up with this thing and, and run with it, okay? Um, that's it for me on advertising in schools, unless anybody has any questions or comments.
That's it under old business.
Move on to new business.
Uh, again, this was, uh, how do you want to start with this?
I guess I'll start with it, um, so I wanted, is this a discussion of oversight of the organization's websites? Back in the day, uh, the Revenue Enhancement Committee, we sort of stumbled across it, that this school district didn't have a cohesive web, um, sort of program, we had different websites for different buildings, we had different organizations, and clubs, and sports, all having their own websites, nobody was really monitoring the content of these different websites, there's no uniformity and so on and so forth. So, a few years ago, we kind of brought the district websites in terms of the buildings in-house, and provided one cohesive website for the district, and at the time, my recollection was that, uh, Mr. L. Gath was gonna do the same thing with all these satellite websites for the different sports and stuff like that, and kind of bring them all in under the Daniel Boone umbrella, because they were representing Daniel Boone Athletics, and, uh, we wanted to make sure that we had some sort of control over what was being broadcast on those sites. So, um, I believe Mr. Kurtz brought to my attention that there was, um, a website out there that was still not under our control, and I don't know to what degree we've actually gone back after that initial, um, effort to bring them all in.
But I think, if I remember, one of those, that a lot of these websites, if you use the Daniel Boone name, whether it's the, the Matt Club, or the band, or the Athletics, are being run by organizations that are not under control of the school district itself, it's a fundraising arm of, of, of various organizations, and I'm not sure we have control, we can tell the music boosters what they can put on their website, or the athletic boosters what they can put on their website, or what the Matt, the wrestling team, cause it's the Matt Club or whatever, what they can put on their website, and I think that's, that's part of where it was, if I recall, where it was left.
Well, let me, I did a little, uh, background today, I was actually talking with, uh, Mr. Henkel, Mr. Matts, and, and with, uh, Mrs. Goss, or with Ms. Goss. If you look at our website, you can look at it now while I'm talking, if you scroll into the athletics page, almost every team has some kind of website, and, and I agree with Mr. Basil, that when that's a team that's a Daniel Boone, that's using the Daniel Boone School District name, I think we need to probably exercise some tighter control over it. From a technological standpoint, one of the things that I, I learned from Mr. Matts today, that, like, if you look at the baseball team's website, and that was one I looked at in particular, there are some features that they can build into that, from a software standpoint, I suppose, that we can't offer, so we let them use the website, but we don't really... Am I saying that wrong, Mr. Matts? That's correct, so, um, if we were to bring them all under our umbrella, their website in a sense would lose some of its zazz, if you will, and...
They're linking to their website, but they're not on our server.
But, uh, we do, as far as, uh, from what Mrs. Ms. Goss said to me, we do monitor and watch what they actually post on there, at least from an athletics standpoint, and I know the original concern arose out of something on the band website that was probably...
It was on YouTube account.
It was on the, there was, and again, i- i- if you allow them to use it, and, and you want some extra functionality, that, they'll go out with a Google will be their webs, I, I don't know all the technical terms for it, but there are a couple of them that are strictly under, and they're using our functionality, and then there are some others that are not. My major concern would be, and, and I share the concern brought forward, are just, I'll use, not that it's a negative word, but if there are rogue websites out there, we don't want that, we want to be able to at least have some exercise of control over what's being put out there on those websites.
Is this an issue that has to get addressed up the policy committee?
I think it may, it's sounding to me like it needs to have a, 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 a beginning discussion at that level, and maybe we need to put something in writing. I, I mean, I think our practice is okay right now, but that's one of those things that, you know, this group's sitting around the table, this is the way we're doing it now, five years from now, only three or four of us are still here, who knows what it might be, so I think it would be good to put it in writing.
Yeah, my issue, my only really, my only real concern, I guess, would be that we want the district to be able to have control over what our organizations are doing.
Absolutely, that's not an issue, I agree with you totally.
Well, it was an issue in regard to what we discussed earlier.
Right. Well, that's why we're talking about it now.
Yeah, and I think that we really should have everything under the district umbrella, and everything should be, at least, there needs to be a way, if something were to be posted, that wasn't, that was objectionable or inappropriate, there would need to be a way for the district to take action.
Absolutely.
And having websites independently run outside of the district for district programs, I don't think is conducive to allowing...
But again, if you look at, like, as you just said, if you look at the baseball website, we would not have the functionality to go in.
And they're not the only one, they're, I mean, some of those websites are really nice.
The features that are on that website, if that website was in-house...
I understand, but I'm just saying, I think that the technology department needs to have access to that website.
They do.
Where it needs to be registered to the district's name.
That I can't, do we do that, Mr. Matts? I'm sorry...
They're posted on a third-party website.
But are they registered, I mean, they're posted, but I think the registration, you can...
Well, that's why I think what Mr. Sermonaro said, we need to probably get some...
Okay, yeah, I don't think they should be registered to individual coaches, I think that's not good, we're talking about student...
Understood, and I, and I think...
...website independently run, that has no district oversight at all, I just think the district needs to be involved to a certain extent, if we're dealing with district's name, if there's communication taking place, the district needs to have...
This is probably turning into a written procedure.
Okay, so we're saying...
I, I think that's the way it needs to go.
Okay, so we'll talk about the policy committee, but it came up, so I wanted the whole board to be aware of it, and obviously, if you've got comments or input on it, don't be shy about it.
We were talking about trademarking the name or something years ago, that it would prevent them from doing it if it's trademarked.
Like, I don't want to make it difficult for anybody, I don't want that to be, I just, I think there needs to be a way for the district to be...
No, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a, um...
I don't think it's addressed, uh, we don't, we can hash it out, but just, I don't think it needs to get addressed by us controlling the technology, I think it gets addressed by us...
The oversight.
Yeah, the government's saying...
Right, absolutely.
Right, yeah. Just I don't, we don't want to be in the business of posting websites.
But we gotta be able to say, hey, that's objectionable, take it down now.
Right.
Or take it down ourselves, is what we're...
No, no, we should be able to do it, is it district, is it district?
No, I don't know, I disagree with that, but we'll talk about the policy committee, the only control you can have, cause then you, then your web looks, the only way you can take it down is if your web looks...
No, you just need to break policies in place, to tell them that they, they have to see some...
You can't much manage everything, you gotta let someone know.
Is this my...
Okay. Well, we'll talk about it in policy, and we'll come up with something and bring it back, but I thought we'd start here first, so, um, and having ended that conversation, then moving on to student surveys, Mr. Kurtz.
All right, thank you, um, I recall seeing in my senior year junior year, district website, um, for juniors and seniors in high school, a survey was available, to really express their opinion of the education being provided to you, the facilities, et cetera, and I think this is a great tool that the district could use to improve our services at the high school, um, and I believe, uh, it was forwarded to the entire board today. Um, I hope you got a chance to look at it, I'd actually like to summarize a few results, which I looked at earlier today, which I think are very, uh, enlightening, and can be very helpful, um, so you'll just bear with me for a second. About 12 things I want to look at, all of which we, cause I know this really wants to, this is important, I feel.
Before you do that, I just want to make the board and the public aware of this, if you remember, this is one of your initiatives that you had as, as, as part of, uh, things that we were doing, so just for the benefit of the public, before he starts this, the first time this happened was two years ago, and, and the second time it obviously had happened was the, um, last year, in, in the latter part of each of those last two school years, we posted a survey for, I believe, juniors and seniors, I think it was only open to juniors and seniors, to, uh, bring their opinions on a number of things related to school climate, so that's really what the basis of it was, so that's the...
There's also been several studies published that anonymous surveys in high school students should be taken to grade dissolve, because a lot of times it's done, hey, 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 let's joke, give everybody, and I went through this survey, and I read it, and in many of the, the negatively, the impact, oh, the comment and the negative, where...
Those, what you're talking about?
And the numbers, when you look at it, the numbers sway negatively hugely, uh, it's, 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 I, I find very little creep in some of those numbers.
Well, I think we should talk about it, if we don't believe it's a helpful tool, if it's not, if it's biased in some way, which is...
Yes, a tool that's, that, that you, you are not associated with, and it's anonymous, is a very difficult tool to, to be actual, to be actionable.
Fiercely reliable, you should be...
Yes, to be actionable, and, and if you were to run statistical analysis on that tool, um, again, without knowing all the data and everything else to be able to run it in there, you may find that the, the numbers don't, aren't statistically true.
Okay, um, that being said, I'd like to go through a few of them, and I'll voice my opinion, having been into schools, and then other board members have appealed for these two to chime in, but I know a lot of these issues are ones that I've raised too in the past, um, so I'm just gonna highlight a few of the questions that were asked in the school, and I'd like to know if anything can be done to address them. On page 11, the question, it was stated, uh, my school facilities are well-maintained, and you can either agree strongly, agree, disagree, or disagree strongly, and 65% of survey respondents disagreed with that, and I can attest to that, I know the cafeteria was not always clean, the auditorium was rarely cleaned, um, I'm not sure if this is being changed now, uh, but the stairwells were very dirty, there was gullible floors, it was, it was disgusting, um, and, and I agree with that 65%, I agree with them, the school facilities are well, well-maintained, and anybody who's been in the stairwell at the high school can attest to that, I'm not sure if this is being changed now, if we're having a late comment...
The stairwells were just recently painted.
Where they also, probably less frequent, um, so hopefully that'll change next year, and I think what we can do is look at these over the course of the years, if, if they are, if we can make them more live. My school offers an adequate number of courses, I know we're talking about this in terms of where we can, we made some course alterations in the previous years, and in spite of those changes, 72% of students agreed that the school offers an adequate number of courses, so I thought that was interesting, um, so students do agree that they have enough options available to them now. In terms of elective courses specifically, 69% of students agree that the school offers a variety of elective courses, so there are a lot of interesting things in here that, not only, and are not necessarily negative, a lot of comments are positive as well. Um, another, on page 27, my school offers adequate extra regular opportunities, 77% of students agreed. Uh, grading practices are consistent in all my classes, 66% of students disagreed, and I think this is something we're trying to address in, in, uh, ensuring conformity in, I believe, quizzes and tests, so hopefully that will change, and 66% disagreeing, and grading practices are consistent, I think that's substantial, and when you have a lot of classes, that can really make a difference. But the student handbook clearly describes the rules and conduct of students, 88% agreed, so in terms of discipline issues, if you have 88% of students saying, yes, this is right, you know what we're supposed to do, I think that's also very, uh, very good, and very positive. Let me see here, I'm skipping over a few. An issue here, which I know if you speak to some high school students, they'll say this, some students are targeted by teachers and administrators, 71% of students agree, I'm not saying that happened or has not happened, but that's a pretty large number of students to be saying that, especially when you have 88% saying the rules are fair, um, so I'm not sure if anything has been changed there, I know we did shuffle administrators around, I'm not sure if that had anything to do with it, but I'd like to see the results in this year as well. My school provides academic assistance to those students meeting, tutoring, labs, vet class sessions, 86% of students agreed, so I'm very happy to see that. This one, I believe, there are a few coming up here that are very important to me. By the time I graduate, my school have prepared me for college in four, 68% agreed, I think that should be a little bit higher, a lot higher actually, I mean, that's good, majority agree to prepare more effectively, um, that being said, I think it would be great to have it higher, cause that's our goal, to prepare students for lifelong career learning. My school, this is very relevant, it involves the diversity issue we had, my school is supposed to be to cultural and ethnic diversity, 62% of students disagreed with that statement. And then, the one, this is the last one I'm gonna mention specifically, and the one that I think is most important for us to address somehow. Page 99, students at my school value learning, 74% of the student survey disagreed with that statement, and our mission statement says that we want to empower all students as self-directed lifelong learners, and students only get 26% of their class bases, um, what was the word they used, the term they used, value learning, I think there's an issue, so we really, I think, need to emphasize it, all, all the positive benefits of learning, and learning, not just now in high school, but all throughout life, I mean, if you don't believe that learning is valuable, what's the point?
What's, again, I, I don't mean to argue, but what's the definition of value, you don't know, a 17-year-old...
I understand, but I'm just saying...
...definition of a valuable education, what is your definition of the...
Value learning, I think that's pretty straightforward, to you, derived...
Do you know what it is, nowhere else, but how about the 16 or 17-year-old that's taking this quiz, I mean, an example, or this is what we're looking for, could maybe get you a higher score, my, my, my school, uh, you know, conditioned me, or provided me with the ability, or whatever, the question was, to go on for a higher education, or they don't know, they haven't gotten out there yet, you can say that now, but maybe when you graduated, you didn't think the school positions you for a job, or higher education, cause you didn't know what you're getting yourself into, you look back, you say, you know what, you haven't did.
That's true, that's one question, I do think, I think we need to give some of these students what we're looking for, credit as well, they do know what we're talking about.
Let me, let me, let me just try to bring some closure to this, and I don't need to cut you off if we still need, the two things that you want to look, one of the things you want to look at with the survey first is the return rate, and the return rate of this, I, I, I forget, I don't remember what the percentage was on this, but it was, it was middling at best, there wasn't, we, i- if you would get a higher return rate, the statistical power in your answers obviously becomes stronger, so that's, that's the first thing you want to say. The second thing is, is, a, a survey is only as good as the purpose for which it's intended, and the reason that you would give a survey like this is to hear opinions, and because really, that's what it is, it's an opinion survey, I wouldn't want to say it's fact or fiction, it is, it's a, it's a mood kind of, and I think there is value in, in hearing those responses, I just think it's very important to have a tempered response to the things that you hear in it, and going forward, obviously, if we, if we hear 100%, even if it's 25 kids that responded to the survey, say, so, and this is totally worthless, whatever it might be, then we need to pay attention to that, so...
Well, you did have a very large, some of the numbers, I did mention 80%, that was a positive, 80% I can...
No, 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 but I mean, either way, uh, one of the...
If we're going to not go by what the surveys are saying, why are we giving them out?
That's exactly right, I, I was gonna commend Mr. Kurtz for, for bringing up the issues just to talk about, regardless of whether we take action or not.
Right, absolutely.
Either, you know, everything we do, we should do for a conscious reason.
Absolutely.
So, if we're doing these surveys, why are we doing these surveys?
Use the data for something.
If, if we're shutting down this dialogue, why are we doing the surveys?
No, I mean, to, to be honest with you, some of the things, and, and again, many of the things that you're mentioning there, they're given directly to the high school principal for a purpose, to say, you know, what, what do you want to say is, is legitimate here, what do you, because I think the staff has a right to weigh in on those results as well, to say, you know what, this is something that we need to take a look at as well, and that was the whole point of doing that survey.
But, but, yeah, I mean, I did two years, did nothing but statistical analysis, I'm done, sample size is 76, out of 600 potential, he was...
I don't think it was 600 potential.
Well, again, everybody who's a junior or senior would able to take this, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Then if they had a sample size potential close to 600, you had 76. I would recommend, again, I mean, if you want to make this powerful, and we get good data, then you hand it out.
It's voluntary, it is strictly voluntary.
And have them fill it out, and then pass it back or something, that way you get a larger sample size, and the impact will be much greater overall. If you don't know, again, I'm just saying, if you got a larger sample size, you're gonna get a much more relevant impact on what this data means.
I agree, I agree.
The other thing, Connor, is that, you have to realize that in the, in the time span, this is only the second year we did that, so it's not kind of in the culture yet, as we continue to do it, if we do it year after year, I think it'll grow.
Even at the first, we should acknowledge perhaps the cleanliness issue, which I mentioned when I wrote it up after I was elected, really, there was no change. Like, those things, I mean, it really should only take one year to realize we're doing something wrong, and it should be corrected, and the results really don't show that things would change. I'm not trying to cause divisiveness or anything, I do believe it's important to look at the tools we have, and this is a tool we have, and I do think it's valuable, 76 students has 76 opinions, and we do have students who, like I mentioned, they do have strong opinions on these issues, and I think it's important that we, that we address those, especially today.
I would just say, we have not ignored that survey, we're using that.
I think, Mr. Kurtz, you bring up a valid point, it's a tool, we put the tool in place for a purpose, which was to get some feedback from our students on issues that need to be addressed. There's obviously, it's not a statistically sound survey, there's, and there's lots of different things, whether it's a sampling error, or it's the type of question that's written, or the types of responses that you give them to choose, and they can impact the survey, there's a whole science to that, and it's not a scientific survey, but I would agree with you that if certain issues are raised there, it certainly shouldn't be ignored. If it's gonna be ignored, then we shouldn't be doing the survey.
And I also-
I'd like to see a larger group, I'd just like to see a larger group. Yeah, a larger group, obviously, would be better, but I wouldn't shortchange the fact that some of these students cared enough to take the time-
Absolutely, there's some very thoughtful responses, if you read the qualitative part, where they actually took the time to respond.
And, you know, weed out the things that were just, you know-
Right, there's always outliers in a survey, and you just toss them out, but there's, when you find consensus in a survey, that's when you, I think you have some power.
Or, you know, if we've seen some things on there that should give us a pause, then those are things we should focus on and go out and re-survey.
Yeah, and I know we, I mentioned some negative things, there are a lot of good things too, a lot of good things.
I would, again, ask the next question, if you can put one out of these, I'm trying to get a larger sample size, but also, I'm trying to reword a question a little differently, to see if you get this, still get in the same way, whether it's planning a question, or fairness in grading, or whatever, so that you can see if it complements itself again in the same way. And that's a typical way we would write up these surveys, that you'll ask the question in two different ways somewhere else in the survey, to see if you still get the same type of response, to validate the original question you got. It's kind of hard on you to just build it clean, there's only one way you can ask it to build it clean, but, you know, are you being picked on, and are you graded fairly? Two different areas, they tend to contradict each other. Yeah, I understood the policy, but the teachers are saying leave me out, you know, type, they tend to contradict each other when you look at it from that standpoint.
Well, the other luxury that we'll have is, we do it in subsequent years, we'll have those years as comparison points, as well as benchmarks.
I think that'll be very helpful as well, it'll be mandatory, it's already addressed.
There may be some value for each of the committees to take that and review with that their committee, and if the feedback is that the school's crappy and dirty, well, that's facilities.
That's a good point.
If there's some about class size, or whatever it is about-
CNI.
-extracurricular instructions, so, and it could, it could be action, it could just be a review, but I would propose that each of the committees take that, review it-
Well, you've all had the results now.
That's a great idea, yeah. And I would encourage board members to look at the comments on the bottom too, some of them, yeah, you have to answer in the survey, yeah, they're gonna be silly, but a lot of them have outdated information, I think.
No, I was actually very pleased both years with the results, obviously there were some areas for improvement, as you would hope you would find it in a survey to try to make yourself better.
Speaking of that, Doctor, one last thing, can you forward the board, I know we got the 1112 survey, can we also get the 2010, I have it here in front of me, I don't think it was included in the email, 2010-
The board would have originally got it, but I can certainly recirculate it.
Yeah, I don't know if the new board members would have got it. Okay. All right, thank you very much, thanks for allowing me to address that.
Thank you for bringing it up. Okay, any other new business?
Just, given we have a short month, we have, I don't believe we're having a-
Are you okay, Frank?
You're my neighbor.
That woke me up.
Please continue.
Are we having a facilities committee meeting this month?
I don't know.
Given that we only have one extra Monday now, okay, if you want to, let me know, just the other committee chairs, if we're gonna have a policy or revenue enhancement, if we can get them on the calendar, if you're not gonna have one, that's fine, based on the reorganization, just let me know. It's all out.
Okay, any public comment on any item?
Tom Shat, 729 Second Street, I want to congratulate the Department of Officers for coming here. I do want to say, I'm still saying up front, there's certain people using my circuit of protection, it's very difficult to hear them in the game. How many questions I have, how many days of instruction do you have in the original calendar? Thank you. I agree with the comment, thanks to the Monday, I'm having this as an instructional day for students. You have two days right now to make up, is that correct?
Based on the weather, yes.
All right. And, what you're gonna vote on, two weeks from now, would make, what two days to make up those two?
No, those are gonna stay, I think the plan is, is when the next one would occur.
No, I thought you talked about two days.
No, Mrs. Torsha can answer your question then.
What are your first two fundamental questions? What are the first, when are those two days when we're gonna make up the decision?
June.
Okay, I have a suggestion. My suggestion is, one of those days should be president's issue.
Okay, we'll take that.
Use that day, and that gets you an extra day to debate. The other question I have is on the new election regions, and a number of you said that you're gonna be voting the same place in the primary, I know the primary is May 21st, but the first time that this is going to come up is when people are trying to get petitions to run.
That's correct.
So that's way before the first.
That's why I'm moving forward with this now.
That's what I'm saying, because-
This'll be on the website tomorrow.
Okay.
But we need to be more aggressive than just the website, but we at least, we knew we needed to move forward, and the whole plan was to get started this month, so we're gonna move.
Well, my only point was, it's way before the 21st.
Absolutely.
It's a petition issue. And the only other question I have, Mr. Kurtz, I agree with what you're, I've waited spent time reading through those items, and one thing as a teacher that I did every year the last day I was there, and they were not allowed to put their name on it, and I had a survey that did it for me, it actually gave me a grade, and things they liked, and things they didn't like, and I'm telling you, I read every one, it still has some, and it was absolutely did not align with the rules on there. It's funny, in the same class, I would be the one student who'd give me an A-, and somebody else they'd give me a D-. But that's just the way they, I understand it. But I do agree, I think we should need to make a comment, to put for a junior or senior in high school, does your high school prepare you for college or work? I just wouldn't put that in as a question. Those are questions you want to ask to freshmen and sophomores in college who are graduated from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Shane Hop, looking for the Garry Town Road. I sent an email during, it was right after therapy, and Garry Town Road was closed, we had a drive-in, and I got the kids off at the fire company, but I would see on my route to the fire company back, school buses to pick up students from private schools, going for the, like, medical transportation, they said, yes, they, they went to the hospital to pick up the kids that go to private schools. I sent an email, but I didn't really get a response from anyone on the board, why would you send the school buses to pick up private school students and not the kids that directly went to the fire company?
The buses that came to pick up the private school students, from my understanding, when I asked Transportation the question, because I saw the email, was that those were the smaller buses, and based on the conditions, they were able to turn them around, but that the larger buses were unable to do that by coming down Garry Town Road.
Well, Garry Town Road was closed, they were sharing their students' car.
That's, that's the answer I was given, I mean, that's as much as I know.
See, I would either, I would do two things, I would either look into transportation route, because those roads you travel on, you know, for the last 100 years, buses have used them before, 20 years, 40 years, on the back roads, there are students that live back there. Second, if, if the private school students shouldn't have to be at the fire company